I'm going to call a meeting to order. I'm going to ask Dr. Clayton if he will release some prayer tonight.
Dear heavenly Father, we would thank you for the opportunity to serve our community, guide us to make our good decisions, and grant us wisdom in doing so. We thank you for all the blessings that you've given us, but most of all, we thank you for the pathway, the salvation that you provided us through your Son Jesus. And it's in his name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Clayton. Any comments from anyone? If not, we'll move right into the meeting. First item is we're going to swear in three officers. Dr. Charlie?
If we could get you, we got Judge Milton Adams is going to swear y'all in tonight. We could get y'all to come forward. He can do all that at one time. Can we get somebody to take their pictures?
I will make a picture.
Yeah. We need Jerry Stone and Dr. Ethan and Dr. Rossing.
In particular?
No, no order.
In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas. I.
Charlie Rassner.
I, Gary. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the Office of Trinity Valley Community College Board of Trustees.
The duties of Office of Trinity Valley Community College Trustee.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best my ability.
Will to the best my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
Defend.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
The laws of the United States.
The laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
I'll say that Dr. Gary, I will make a picture with you. All right, we'll move right into the presidential board.
We have our rodeo coach, Brent Bratton. Would you, Brent, would you come forward? Let's give him a round of applause with rodeo team. Those guys were truly amazing. They did a great job in Casper, Wyoming. They work hard, 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 all the time, and it paid off. And Brent is a great coach. Brent's been with us now for 10 years, maybe 11 years?
Fourteen.
Boy, time does pass by quickly.
More than fifteen. It seems like ten.
He's a great coach. He does a good job. The students, the rodeo club, the rodeo team that we have has great GPAs. They graduate, they go on, they do a great job representing the college. I just want to say you've done a great job, Coach. And you have, you want to tell us a little bit about the rodeo team and what you did in Wyoming? I think you've got a rodeo team member here?
Yeah. Cassidy Fennato.
Would you stand up? There you go. I watched you on TV. You did a great job.
Like I said, I mean, the kids get to know them and the maturity of them. It's just such a blessing. And then their families come along with it. So we get a whole lot of help and support from them. So it's just very blessed to do it. But the rodeos were consistent of 11 regions in the NRA. And we're in the southern region. And each region will have 300 to 400 kids. And then they all go to the college national finals. But within our region, we had the champion team ropers, Jace Tettler and Katie Philly. And they won our region. And then we had a second place breakaway roper, Cassidy. Then they had a fourth place team roper. And we lost Cassidy's sister this year. And that was a rough year. And we've grown from it and gotten better. Hard work, like you say, and it's paid off. And we dearly miss her. And it made things a bit of a struggle at times. But anyway, we had a fourth place team roper also. And then Cassidy's sister, Victoria, finished 13th in the breakaway and missed half her. But she was, she wouldn't let you know when things weren't right and we needed to fix something. You always knew where she stood. And so that's what I love about these kids. And, but anyway, at the CNFR, we had Devon Johnson, who was fourth in our region, that went around. So he got a ring for that. And then Jace and Kate, they placed 16th overall. And Devon finished 14th overall in the nation. And we had, let's see here, I think Cassidy wound up 35th. And so it was just a great year for us in the college national finals. I don't know if any of y'all have been there, but it's a great experience. And it's right next to the CNFR and a great production. But such a blessing to be a part of that. And without y'all's support, the community's support, none of this would take place. And it's just, it's an amazing thing to be a part of. It's just, and we appreciate each one of you in the community and for allowing us to do what we love and providing us facilities, so many things. It's just, we really never been told no. It's just whatever you need, we find it. So we appreciate each one of you.
Thank you, Coach. We appreciate it. We put out a good rodeo back in April here in Athens. And they went out and got sponsors and they did a lot of, a lot of good things for the college. A lot of good public relations for the college. Thank you. I think we were going to, we were going to talk a little bit about the summer enrollment report. I think we're going to do that, Dr. Spazira and Dr. Parnell.
We're currently still registering for summer two enrollment. So the summer enrollment report is not finalized. We'll be able to come back in July and give you a formal report that is true numbers. But if you look on the first page, this is a comparison of where we are today compared to where we were at this time last year. So we felt that was a true kind of snapshot. And you can see that we were, we're currently sitting at one student up. This first page shows you credit enrollment only. So we're talking about our online, our go-credit, our TDCJ academic and not our, not any of our CE or in-service projects. If you flip over the second page, it just says a graph breakdown for you. But if you look at the third page, where we're looking at the general notes, you'll see that while we are looking at the one student ahead right now, where we sit right now, we're still up a little bit in our contact hours, but we still have summer two registration that is going to happen. And I was talking about now earlier, I have a couple of, a couple of telltale signs to know when, I think we're about done with registration. And it's normally when we get our athletic teams registered for summer two. And right now, they haven't registered. So volleyball hasn't registered, football hasn't registered yet. So we know it's going to continue to grow, to increase. We just don't know exactly how much, but we will end up being up for the summer. And when we come back in July, we'll be able to show that. But when I was, when we were putting this report together, one of the things I was looking at and talking to Dr. King and Dr. Parnell about was I'm really curious about this, again, enrollment only shows our credit enrollment, but we talked about TDCJ in the in-service project, those special project, court recordings, some of our big CE items that are not included in this. So I started doing some digging today. And I don't have a good full report for you yet. My goal is to have that for you when we come back in July. But if you look at the last page, you can see where we're at, we're roughly about 400 and, what did I say, 400 and, about 515, 515 students that we are currently up in enrollment for TDCJ and CE courses. So if you take that 515 and add it to the one student that we're up, we're actually already showing a pretty significant increase. And one of the things that I wasn't able to do was to pull those contact hour funding for this 515 yet. I have someone in IT working on helping to get that report generated. So by July, we'll be able to show you really kind of both sides, what the credit looks like as well as what the non-credit looks like as well. We don't currently have a fall comparison to look at. We are, when we looked at the fall, we, because of the way that college tracks data, we didn't have a year to, like a day-to-day snapshot. So all I had to compare it to was where we started at the beginning of the semester and what our 12-day census was. So we didn't feel that it was a good comparison to give you where we were in enrollment for fall right now, because we didn't have a day-to-day to compare it to. We, once we get into August, we'll be able to really look at the fall enrollment and show you those numbers.
And this is some of the data that we talked about a minute ago and that we're going to be able to gather that we couldn't do before. Some of that is because of the new technology that we have available now that we didn't have before. So we'll be able to do, like you said, day by day. On June 28th, we have this many students enrolled. Next year, on June 28th, we have this many students enrolled. And it'll break it down.
And just like you can see up here, we look at what is go-credit, what is online, what is face-to-face? And we can even take the face-to-face and go further into looking at telltale signs and our TDCJ, Athens, Carroll, et cetera. And that Gibson here is working with us on this project called Power BI, which will help us really gather this data and have some meaningful dashboard that anybody will be able to run and look at without necessarily having to wait for us to present a formal report. Any questions?
Question, is it, what, explain to us what multiple locations means on that front page?
So multiple locations, what that means is that a student is not sitting in one specific location. So if they're taking only Athens campus, then they're going to show up on Athens campus. If they're taking only online, they're going to show up on online. But let's say that they take a class only Athens campus and they also take an online class, which is what most of our students do. So what they do is, that's what that multiple categories is. It means that they're taking, is a student that's taking classes on multiple different locations. So it could be a dormitory and then online, it could be typically online, didn't it? But it could be like a Athens student and a Palestine student. And because they don't, aren't strictly set into one location, then it's going to put them into that multiple.
So would these be duplicated numbers then?
No, because those students, that 78, or 104 that you look at that's in multiples for this semester for summer, they're not included in these other numbers. So of that 104, that's another one of my, I can't tell you of those 104, how many of them are Athens, how many of them are Terrell, how many of them, I don't, I don't have that yet, but my colleague here to the left is going to help us on that.
Thank you.
Good question. Anybody have any other questions? The other, I want to mention also, in front of you, the, you have a couple of documents that were kind of a summary of what was discussed earlier at our dinner. And so hopefully you can look through that. It's a hard copy of it. We're going to also send you a electronic copy of that as well, so that you'll have that, you can look at it at some point in time. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention. There's just a lot, a lot of things going on at the college. And we wanted you to be as aware as you possibly can of all the different things going on and all the different things that we're trying to do to, to be better, to get better. Also, I wanted to mention that was the HSI initiative, the Hispanic Serving Institute. That's something we've been trying to do for the last three, four years. You guys probably remember, it's been a lot of struggle. It was three years ago, we were at 19.8, I believe, Hispanic enrollment. And now it's up to 25%. That's going to open the door for lots of opportunities, lots of funds available that we've never had the opportunity to do before. So I, you know, I just can't tell you how proud I am of the fact that we're there. That's a milestone. And we've been trying, I mean, I know when Kristen Bennett was here, that was one of her things that she was doing. And that's been three years ago. So it's, it's a big deal. For us to get 25% Hispanic enrollment is a big deal. And we're going to be taking advantage of it as we go forward from here. So there's not that many colleges in East Texas and North Texas that are 25% and are HSI. The only one that I'm aware of is Northeast Texas Community College. And so some of the things that we've done over the last two or three years, some of the initiatives that we've done, like soccer programs, things of that nature, they're paid off. They paid off for us. Just wanted you to be aware of that. And that's really the only thing, other, only thing I had. I wanted to just mention Northwest Dorm. We're, according to what I'm being told, we're on schedule. We anticipate the possibility of the actual construction part of it being done by the middle to the third week in July. And then we can kind of go from there and do some of the other finishing things that we need to do in the last week of July and the first week of August. So we're on schedule. We're planning on having it done. We're planning on getting it finalized. And we want to take pictures and maybe even give you a tour when it's all done, because it's going to look like a brand-new facility. And so we're going to be proud of that as well. That was the only thing I had to talk about.
All right. All right, move to item five. Consider the minutes of board meeting for April 27th and May 23rd of 2022. Here, you've had those presented to you. I hear a motion that would approve them as presented. Steve makes that motion. Dr. Terry seconds the motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, lock sign. Motion carries. Item number six, consider the business financial investment report for March and April of 2022.
Okay, Mr. David, it's all yours.
Yes, sir. I'll bring that up. The first thing I'll talk about is revenue. Y'all have March and April. I'm going to maybe talk about April and June here today. The revenue, just like Kristen said, the tuition fees appears to be trending up. We've got $11,650,000 as of May against the budget of $12,001,500. I think we'll make that. So I'm encouraged by that. You see, it's a slight increase over last year even as of April. I'm not quite the pessimist that I was the first budget. The budget committee will see is not the first pass of revenue. My first pass of revenue, we exceeded as of May this year. So I had to revise my projection. I was happy to do it because we already exceeded it. So I do want to point out, and again, this sounds like a broken record, housing, food service, bookstore are all trending up. Housing, we've already exceeded our budget. Again, that was, I was a pessimist when I did that last year. But food service, bookstore, bookstore has a big summer because of when school starts in August. They, they do a lot of their sales in the summer. So that budget looks big, but you can see it went from a million one to a million two forty in 30 days. We all know that the state appropriations is down. And I'll talk more about that in HIRF. Million six for the next two years, this year and the following year. Property taxes again, $2.1 million ahead. We've collected most, not all for this year. So that's not a surprise. Don't have much to add. And payroll, I will point out under other benefits, that you see a reduction that's mainly because of Christmas bonus last year that the board was good enough to do. We didn't do that this year, so you have that reduction. Maintenance and operations, I guess we've lost our, oh, there we go. Went back. Okay. Again, we talked about travel. I for one was able to go to Tacmo this year for the first time in three years, for example. Equipment and furniture, I did want to point out there, we had some things there, the Mars grant for one from the foundation. We bought $48,000 worth of Wally equipment, grant from the foundation. And as you recall, I brought to you several purchases that were supply chain issues, about 173,000. That's one of the reasons you see that 476,000 increase. We're still haven't gotten the budget, but that's one of the reasons it's so high at this point. One of the things, electricity appears to be up. Our usage appears to be up. I haven't had a chance to talk to David Graham. I'll be taking a further look at that. Our rate is locked. Y'all locked that in before I got here. So thank goodness that the rate is locked. I'm not aware of the state doing, they call it live charges or any TDSB charges because of the snow again. I'm not aware that they increased those, but that's one of the things I want to look at. As y'all recall, that's the one big part of the electricity business that's still regulated, or the live charges, meter charges. Let's see. The only thing I want to point out, and again, this will be on your, our payments over 25,000. We are now truly debt-free. We made the last payment to Athens for the fitness center. So other than your accounts payable, we're debt-free. All right, we can switch over to the next page.
Page three, can you?
Well, let's go to page four.
Okay.
Your, this is just again, I won't spend a lot of time on these cash investments. Cap reserve is 24 million, 58,000. Still have a healthy operating reserve for most of our tax and tuition revenue is in. So that $11 million excess you saw, that'll drop over the summer as it always does. Next page, investment report. And those massive CD events that we, like, we spread some more money out in, I believe it was June, Monday staff.
Yeah.
Okay. So you'll start seeing that in, in. Capital reserve report, I wanted to point this out because y'all were talking about the fire alarm system here a little bit. The three projects that we got money coming out of here now are Northwest Dorm, the HSC parking lot, and the Charles parking lot. I think one of those is finished. What I'd like to do, when we get the fire alarm, is continue to have that project come out of here, so we can keep it kind of in one spot. But I just point that out, you see on this, I'll go to the next page. Yeah. You see that we had some Northwest Dorm charges in April. As Dr. King pointed out, they're making some good progress. Does anybody have any questions before I go on? On the over 25,000, let's go to the next page. I didn't want to cheat you out of March, so I've got March and April. You see, we, we have a bridge reconstruction, a couple of payments there. I want the bridge here on campus. Your final fitness center payment there. Most of the rest of those, I believe, you see at HSC parking lot. Any questions on those? And the next page is April. It's a couple of purchases in there, HBAC, Northwest Dorm, some of the regular things. Anybody seen anything there?
One question.
Yes, sir.
Under the air mark services, 50 grand board counts.
Well, that's, that's the payments to air mark. And as you recall, we do it every two weeks. Every two weeks. Yeah. So they take account, and you remember the contract says we only pay for usage. And so every two weeks, that gets submitted, and that's what we pay for. As opposed to, and you know, when COVID came along, it was sort of like, thank goodness, as you recall, because we didn't pay them for what needs. But this is a way, as we go along, we do this all, all year, we pay them as we know on those accounts.
And you may remember last year, those numbers were in the low twenties, because we had so many fewer students on campus last year than this year. And so this year, we have a lot more students in residence also.
And I looked at that number, David, before you, it's about 800,000. And of course, the revenue's up, so obviously corresponding to this will be up. I think as you said, that was a good contract. Let's talk about HIRF.
Okay.
He's not finished yet.
Oh. This is the student, let's scroll down a little bit. In June, I think there's one, you said that million eight ninety-three, that was, we grew down revenue for this fall and this spring. So when I say revenue, lost revenue. And so that leaves us at 2.8 million. The student portion is zero. We're in a 120-day period now where we're tracking down students whose checks came back, trying to either find those students or get it re-awarded. The government was good enough to give us a little time to chase those folks down. On the next page, this is, I mentioned, actually, let's go, let's go to page 12, I think. The amount that we have left, that 2.8 million, this is kind of the way that I see it breaking out. At the end of the year, I'll draw the lost revenue for contact hours, 1.6 billion. That's going to leave us 1,159,000. And the budget committee, you'll see that number again tomorrow, in next year's budget. When I was at Tacmo, the auditors and attorneys kind of brought something to my attention I hadn't thought about, but hadn't really put numbers to it. The funding period for HIRF ends next June. And that's that, the contact hours that will run from September to June are the 1.3 million that you see. We won't get the 1.6, because in my opinion, next July and August will be outside the grant period. Normally, you don't have expenditures outside the grant period. I'm going to ask a question, but it's really kind of a moot point, because you see, we're going to be 1.3 million in contact hours as of June. We'll have 1.159 left. So unless they give us more money, it's going to be a moot point. So I just point that out to kind of give you some idea of how I'm looking at allocating the money, kind of how we, how this is, as we wind down, how it's flown through. So we're covered this year without any problem. So it's a good thing that tuition appears to be trending up, because obviously there's no hard funding to cover that next year. Any questions about that? I believe that's, that's all I have.
Okay. David, did you want to make a motion on that? Prove the financial reporting?
I, so would.
Okay. Dr. Charlie, second?
I do.
All right. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, lock sign. Motion carries. Item number seven, consider and discuss the dates for the physical year of '22, '23 budget workshop, tax rate hearings, and adoption of the F23, '22, '23 budget approval and September board meeting.
Okay, David, do you want to go, go ahead and talk about that as well?
I'll have a schedule. We'd like to make one slight adjustment towards agreeable. The 25th is just the date that's in state law. The appraisers have to certify to us what our certified values are, so we can calculate tax rates and know if we're above or below the voter approval rate, so the revenue rate that can move between our. has to move a few times. What we'd like to do is to change the August tenth to August fifteenth, which is a Monday. And at that time, we would, the board would do those things that you see. You would have to vote to place a proposal on future agenda. That agenda would be August twenty-ninth. We would have a public hearing also on the twenty-ninth, as well as vote the tax rate and adopt the tax rate if the board chooses on those days, so. That's one change, little part of August fifteenth, if that's possible.
So what that means is that we'll have our normal July board meeting, and then our next board meeting would be August the fifteenth on Monday, and then we'll have our normal August board meeting on August the twenty-ninth. August the twenty-ninth is the fifth Monday. We usually have our board meetings on the fourth Monday, so we're moving it to the twenty-ninth of August so that we have enough time to do the tax hearing and the tax rate all at the same time, so we don't have to do that in September like we used to do.
Yeah, we have to publish a newspaper paper, so after the vote takes place, we have to put that paper.
The budget workshop on tenth or about fifteenth?
Fifteen.
Fiveteenth.
Yeah.
Kyle, budget workshop and the board meeting. Call me fifteen.
But now, there'll be a, the workshop will be on the fifteenth and the board meeting's on the twenty-ninth.
Yeah, the way they make you do it, you have to vote to place a proposal on the agenda, then you have to vote on some other things. It used to be worse, as y'all recall, we had to have two public hearings, had to be spaced apart, that's why it ran into September. They were good enough to let us condense this a little bit currently.
Okay. We just need approval to do that.
Okay. Do I hear approval of those items? David makes motion. Mike makes motion. David second's motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
For discussion, I think, a moment ago.
What'd he say?
We received a budget that is hard copy in mail a few days ago. Guess I'm starting to get a problem in the other part of the week. And just wanted to ask if, if an email version of that could be provided to all the board members so everyone would be able to see what's kind of, you know, what's kind of in the mix and what's being looked at. If we need that, I'm sure you have it. I'd also like to get my version, so it's easier to access. I think that might be helpful to the board to be able to see kind of what's been, what's been looked at. Thanks.
Okay. So back now, Mike makes motion, and David second's motion to approve these dates for the workshop, budget approval, and adoption. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, lock sign. Motion carries. Number eight, consider and discuss bids and approval to install a fire alarm system at Northwest Highway hallway.
Boy, this was the, this was a, was a carryover from the last meeting that we had earlier in June, and for us to go ahead and move forward with the, with the process of putting in a fire mechanical system, fire, a smoke alarm system that went along with, in addition to what we currently have. This would be an electric system. We put in front of you also the bid, the different quote information so that you could see that. The, we went out for bids, and we only got one in. The bid that we got in was about what we thought it was going to be, eighty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars and eight cents. And we, we can get this done now while they're doing the renovation, and we can get it done in the next two or three weeks. And so we believe that it's the right thing to do and to move forward and put in this fire alarm system, and we would just like for the board to approve that at that price. And I, anybody have any questions?
Just, I've asked this before, I think, this has a backup system, good, if electricity goes out, it still works.
David, I believe that's correct. Did you hear the question, David?
Yes.
Right? It does. This'll be good.
Okay. You want my motion to approve it? Dr. Terry second's motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, lock sign. Motion carries. Item number ten. Number nine, consider and discuss faculty contract renewal.
This is the one on the athletic insurance. Athletic insurance. Number nine.
Number nine?
Yeah. Read that one right there.
Oh, okay. Consider and discuss administrators' contract.
Oh, this one right here. Consider and discuss student athletic insurance.
Oh, okay. I don't have the update, do I? Okay, number nine, consider and discuss the student athletic insurance.
Okay, there you go. You did have an old one there. Um, oh, you don't?
Our item nine is discuss faculty contracts.
Oh, no, we sent that out a while back.
Yeah, we sent it.
This was, this was in addition to the initial, it was sent out the next day.
I emailed it and I mailed it.
Okay. I just thought it was a hard job.
Okay. This was just an athletic insurance. This needed to be added. It wasn't on the original agenda, and they came to us the day after we sent it out and needed to add it. And this is something we do every year, and so it's basically athletic insurance, and you should have in front of you information about the bid and the cost. Also has information about the pricing, how it was priced, the claims, that, Mike, you were asking about the claims, I think that's in there as well. You guys have that?
I mailed it to them and I emailed it to them.
Okay.
And then, and then it is on your screen.
Okay.
But I did mail it and I also emailed it.
Okay. Okay. Well, let, let's just look at the screen. Board and Perlin issued a renewable of base student athletic insurance from Pan Am at a rate of two hundred and sixty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars. This will be a decrease of sixteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars from the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, two, twenty-two budget year, which was two hundred and seventy-eight thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. The catastrophic insurance will renew at fourteen thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars, is no change from the previous year. The proposed total cost for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three student athletic accident insurance coverage would be two hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. That's the two sixty-one, nine eighty-three plus fourteen thousand nine seventeen. And again, we were pleased to find out that that's less. If you remember, we had a pretty severe year four, five years ago, and I think that's finally dropped off, and that's made a difference for us. I'm not sure if, Troy, are you on the, on the line here?
Eddie is.
Eddie? Do you have any, I thought Troy was going to be here tonight, but he's not. David, I know you, we talked about this. You have any comments about this?
No, I mean, like I said, at our meeting, it was a reduction.
Yeah.
And so obviously, for that reason, we got plenty of money recovered, and so it was all about claims experience is the reason. I don't remember how many years Troy knows, but I mean, is that, those bad years dropped off. That's reflected in the, in one of those bad years drops off next year, but we've had quite a few people being injured this year, so we hope that doesn't take over the loss. Hopefully, we're still going to be lower next year than we were this year.
Pass this one.
I have a couple of questions, much more just informational. How many claims, like in the last year, since last year, how many claims have we submitted?
I can get that information for you. I don't have it in my working schedule right now.
And then I'm assuming by looking at this chart from Pan Am, we see the paid claims out. Is this right on page two? On the deductible of that, is this five hundred dollars per claim or total deductible? And then the last question, sorry for all this. If we have a student that comes here and has a pre-existing injury, are we obligated under this policy, if they get injured again because of a pre-existing injury, to cover that student?
I don't know whether we would be obligated. That's more of a legal question, whether we'd be obligated to, but I think we would because of that, simply because we do require all students to go through a physical to make sure that they're able to play the sport that they like, and if they pass that physical, then we're accepting them that they are. I think it would be appropriate to do that.
Okay. We need to, we need to, we need to find out specifically. It's, it's up to our insurance whether we do it or not. It's not up to us. And so we need, we need to find, get, get an answer for you. I thought Troy was going to be here tonight, and I think he could answer that question. Maybe Eddie, are you on the line there? Did you hear the question?
I'm texting Troy right now to find out.
Okay. If you don't mind, if you'll find out, and we'll get an answer for that for you.
I would think that if they pass our physical, then they have no pre-existing injury. And that's kind of what I, I have about that.
I will say we have a new development that I don't know how it's going to impact this. Some of you know that we've been working with Dr. Curran to have, for his office to be able to see our students basically free of charge. And that program is up and running now. I don't know how that's going to impact the athletic programs really, didn't, we didn't start this till summer, but if we have a way of getting these students, if they're injured, with them, then they cover everything. We, they ask the student pretty well, yeah, if you have coverage, can you pay the deductible? And if they say no, well, the grant that Dr. Curran got will cover all of that for us. So that, that could lower some of our costs as well.
Good. So we need to table the athletic.
No, we need to approve it.
Oh, approve it? Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments about the athletic insurance?
Dr. King?
Yes, go ahead, Eddie.
Troy says those are, pre-existing injuries are usually caught in physicals, and they usually have to take care of those back home.
Okay.
And go back to their doctor and get it taken care of. Troy will help at times.
If they don't have a doctor, maybe we'll make arrangements. They're responsible on bill.
They're responsible for the bill, but Troy will help them get a doctor to get the injury taken care of.
Can I help answer your question?
Well, I couldn't understand what he was saying. What did he say?
Yeah. He said they're responsible for it, but Troy helps try to get, get paid for them some way. It's, it's their fault. It's their fault. He's just, it's just. Okay, is that on the front end before their season starts, or is that if they were to be injured again?
The physicals happen before they step on the practice field.
Correct. So they are putting in the two, clear.
Okay. I think you gave a lot of answers, so that's good. Okay. We just need approval.
Ron Day makes a motion to approve it. David Mark makes, second's a motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, lock sign. Motion carries. All right, now we can go back to the number nine.
There you go.
Consider and discuss faculty contract renewals.
Okay, it is the recommendation of the division chairs and the associate vice presidents and the provosts to renew the contracts for all those that are currently employed at TBCC in terms of faculty renewals for twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three, so we would ask for approval for those contract renewals.
All right, Terry makes a motion. Dr. Clayton second's a motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, lock sign. Motion carries. All right, item number ten, consider and discuss administrators' contract renewals.
As per the TBCC policy, the college administration is recommending the renewal of the contracts for all currently employed TBCC administrators hired prior to, prior to September one, two thousand sixteen, on the attached list for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three school year. We ask for board approval for these names that we've submitted for renewal for next
Anyone have any questions? You want to prove, David? David makes motion. Ron, Ron second's a motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, lock sign. Motion carries. Item number eleven, consider and discuss election of TBCC board of trustee officers.
As you know, each year, actually, it's, I think it's every two years. The officers of the board shall be elected at the first regular meeting of the board following the regular election of the members of the board in even number of years, at any time thereafter in order to fill a vacancy. The board shall elect one member as president of the board, one member as the secretary of the board, and one member as vice president of the board. So we need nominations and that to be done for president, vice president, and secretary.
I'm going to keep saying all.
All right. Very thin move that we keep the existing officers as they are. Mike second's a motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, lock sign. Motion carries.
Okay, so we got Ray Raymond as the president of the board, and we've got Steve Grant as the vice president of the board, and we've got Ron Day as the secretary. Congratulations.
Item number twelve, consider and discuss personnel updates.
These are the standard personnel updates that we have each month. These are resignations and terminations, retirements, and new hires based upon replacement of the previous positions that were vacated. We would ask for approval of, of the, of the personnel update.
Okay. Dr. Terry makes a motion to approve that. Dr. Clayton second's a motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, lock sign. Motion carries. Now here, motion, we adjourn.
I'm making a motion.
Now I hear a second, that goes. All in favor, say aye. Good night, you all.
Thank you.
Have a safe trip home.